Evening, everybody, and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, October 20, 2022. Just a reminder, recording device will be used during tonight's meetings, and we're going to open it with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every day justice for all.
Okay. Open the meeting with public comment for agenda items. Rules of conduct for public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment for agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the swearing-in of our officers. I'll turn this over to Chief.
My name is Mark Ossman, the Police Chief of East Brandywine Township Police, and I am very excited and honored tonight to introduce our newest three police officers. These officers, we've been doing the hiring process now for a couple of months, and these officers bring us up to our budgeted complement of seventeen officers. Well, I'm going to bring the three of them up: Andrew DiPaolo, Gary Parsons, and Rebecca Sosa. Would you come up here, please? Also bring your Bible-holding selection up here. Officer Andrew DiPaolo, who is on your left, attended Interboro High School and graduated in 2012. Andrew attended Penn State University and graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree in Management and Marketing in 2017. Andrew attended Temple University Ambular Municipal Police Academy and graduated in 2019. Andrew was hired in July 2020 as a part-time police officer with Birmingham Township Police Department in Chester County, there until his hiring by East Brandywine Township Police in September. Officer Gary Parsons attended Peckway Valley High School, graduated in 2009. Gary attended the Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Academy and graduated in 2012. Gary was hired as a police officer by Franklin Marshall College Police and Public Safety in 2014, and he continued to work there up until his hiring by us this past October. Oh, past, we're still in it. Officer Rebecca Sosa attended Upper Darby High School and graduated in 2010. Rebecca attended the Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Academy and graduated in 2019. She is presently enrolled at the college, completing her degree in Administration of Justice. Rebecca was hired by Kennett Square Borough Police Department in 2020 and by East Valley Field Township Police Department in 2021 as a part-time police officer, and she worked for both of those departments up until her hiring this past month. We are very honored to have Andrew, Gary, and Rebecca join our police family, and we want to congratulate you and wish you best of luck. So I'm now going to turn your swearing-in over to our Chairman of the Board, Kyle Scribner, and I'll let him proceed with yours.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we're going to do this a little bit different than we typically do, because there's three of you, so we're going to do this, I'm going to read the hard parts, and you guys are going to do the easy parts today. All right, so if you take your left hand and put it on the Bible, please. Raise your right hand. I state each of your names.
Rebecca.
First and last.
I, Rebecca Sosa. Gary Parsons. Andrew.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the constitutional laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the laws and ordinances of the township of East Brandywine, the law enforcement code of the statutes, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a police officer with fidelity to the best of my ability. I will withhold, I will whip, I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap, or disability. If so, say "I do" in order, please.
I know.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chief, for taking a picture with the Chairman. Thank you, sir.
If you have a man for a quick picture, sir.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Is he out there? Congratulations?
Yeah, this is about the time where everybody walks out on us, and that's absolutely okay. Thanks, everybody, for coming in. Okay, now we're going to go on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Board of Supervisors, October 6, 2022, AM session.
I move we adopt the minutes of October 6, 2022, AM session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to, actually, we'll do the treasurer's report, the authorization to pay bills and approve payroll first.
I've reviewed the bills, and I make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report and the authorization to pay bills and approve the payroll.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to turn it over to Township Manager, Luke.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a mercifully brief report this evening. First, an update on the official map process. The Board had previously authorized staff to forward a draft of our official map for Act 247 review. On October 12, I wrote to the Chester County Planning Commission requesting to, thank you. I've got some very timely feedback from, I need to adjust the camera angle so that I'm in it. I wrote to Chester County Planning Commission requesting a withdrawal of the official map dated September 2, 2022, and the associated draft ordinance from Act 247 consideration. Prior to making this request, it came to my attention that the draft ordinance submitted for Chester County's consideration varied from that last reviewed by the Vision Partnership Grant Steering Committee. The project is being funded in part by a generous grant from Chester County Planning Commission. Therefore, all the materials were expected to be reviewed by that steering committee. The responsibility for the discrepancy between the two drafts of the ordinance is my own. I was under the assumption that the map alone was the committee's deliverable. I solicited a legal review and revised the language of the draft prior to submitting it for 247 review. The Ordinance Task Force, which also happens to be the Grant Steering Committee, will consider both the revised ordinance and any additional public comment, including comment that this Board received relative to the placement of neighborhood trails on the map, at their meeting next week. Pending approval to do so from this Board, staff will resubmit the material for Act 247 review. There are no pending grant deadlines that we may miss by this delay. Second this evening, I have an update on the 2023 budget process. The Budget Committee has now met five times and heard 2023 budget requests from all township departments, township committees, and numerous community partners. At their meeting this morning, the Budget Committee made progress towards refining a draft budget for this Board's consideration on November 3. No action from the Board of Supervisors will be required at your meeting on the 3, but on November 17, you will be asked to consider giving approval to a preliminary budget to be advertised for public comment. Staff will be advertising an additional meeting of the Budget Committee, wasn't scheduled prior to this morning, for Thursday, October 27, at 9:00 AM. Respectfully submitted, Township Manager.
Thank you. You might as well pop right into Bill Inspector's report.
Certainly. Thank you. Yeah, it is online. So, permit activity for September 2022. There were twenty-three told to you, and two zoning permits issued. The fees collected for building and zoning permits totaled $11,772.50. There were fifteen use-and-occupancy permits issued, 137 inspections completed, including six and a half failed inspections. All fees collected totaled $12,296.50. And no, I don't know how we have one half of a failed inspection.
Thank you.
That's respectfully submitted, Noran King, Permits Administrator.
Matt?
Last week and earlier this week, the Road Department prepared an area for handicap parking at Bonsville Mill. On Tuesday, our paving contractor paved the parking area and a trail leading to the double-span bridge. The only work remaining on that is the addition of line striping, and that should complete that project. The contractor for our 2022 paving project has completed their work today. The paving included base repair and overlay of Gloucester Drive and Berkeley Drive, also included base repair and overlay of small section of Rowley Drive, and the last project was the removal of the asphalt on Township Road between Seven Springs Road and the Mount Idy Mobile Home Park. And due to the condition of the road, all the asphalt was removed and replaced with four and a half inches of base and one and a half inch overlay. I'd like to thank Long's Asphalt Incorporated and Estimator Howard Jones for a job well done. The leaf collection for this year is scheduled for the weeks of October 31, November 14, and 28. Residents are reminded to either leave the curbside by Monday of those weeks, and leaves should be placed on the lawn within six feet of the road edge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, for the police report, total monthly events, there was 1,968, investigations completed, 188, patrol miles logged, 8,832, and that is all we have for this one tonight. Okay, so I'll turn it over to the Fire Department.
Good evening. The monthly report for September 2022 for the East Brandywine Fire Company, we had sixty total incidents for the month. Thirty-five of those incidents were fire-related, twenty-five were medical-related. In East Brandywine Township, there were sixteen fire events and sixteen medical events. All the remainings were in other municipalities, with an average response of twelve personnel per incident. We used 169.1 gallons of fuel from East Brandywine Township. There was an estimated $60,000 in estimated fire damage. We held three trainings with an average of 26 people per training. One last item, the fire company is finishing up its renovation and will hold its annual Fire Prevention Open House and Grand Reopening at the station on October 29, which is a Saturday, beginning at 11:00 AM and going till 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, do we have our Planning Commission Minutes who have a motion for the Planning Commission Minutes for September 7, 2022?
I move we accept the minutes of the September 7, 2022 Planning Commission.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Luke, I'm going to turn it to you over again for the Chester County Municipal Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you and your packet and in the folder for your signatures is an amendment to the Round 31 contract between East Brandywine Township and Chester County. This is a grant contract associated with Bonsville Mill Park improvements for Phases One and Two. This is the second amendment to that contract, which is numbered 18829. The amendment before you would extend the deadline for compliance with, to complete the project, to April 3, 2023. By way of a reminder, this project was delayed by both COVID and by Hurricane Ida. We could not accept delivery of some materials associated with Phase Two of the project pending the emergency repairs to a bridge across Beaver Creek. So at this time, I'd respectfully ask the Board to execute this contract amendment with Chester County.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion then for the?
All right. I move that we accept the Chester County Grant Municipal Grant Program Contract Amendment Number Two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Luke, you might as well keep going. Delaware Valley Health Trust.
Thank you. Included in your packet this evening is correspondence from the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust, which provides insurance for both township staff and eligible members of the Board. The correspondence indicates that the rates for next year would be 6% increase in the premiums we pay for employees, but there is an offer to use their rate stabilization fund to reduce that increase to 4.34%. At this time, staff is recommending that the Board authorize staff to respond to Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust, indicating that we'd like to use our rate stabilization fund to bring the increase from 6 to 4.34%. And I will say that the draft of budgets that have been considered by the Budget Committee as late as, as recently as this morning included assumptions for increased rates of 4.34% to premiums.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a question, just, just a general one. By using the rate reduction, is there any, where's that coming from? Is there any future penalty or liability on our part?
Right. So, Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust is a cooperative, it's essentially self-insurance. A bunch of municipalities have banded together to, to purchase insurance. The network we use is Aetna and Delta Dental for dental, but the plan is written by the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust. So, as a cooperative agreement, any profit that would otherwise be associated with an insurance agency is rewarded to the members in terms of rate stabilization. So this represents the difference between actual claims and premiums received. So, you can bank it, or you can use it in the next year. That's the crux of your question.
And that's the thrust of my question. So, okay. And now you said one thing that confused me a little, if I may ask for clarification. I thought we self-insure, but it's administered through Aetna. We don't purchase Aetna insurance, we purchase their administration if you're self-insuring. Dividends is a self-insuring trust, I thought.
Right. Well, I mean, I mean not using the correct words, so I'm going to use words that I am more confident with. Our bill, our monthly payment for premium, is made payable to the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust. The card in my pocket says Aetna.
It simply administers the plan for them.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we take advantage of the rate stabilization fund election.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep on going, Luke.
All right, I'm on a roll, and this, this third spiel is going to sound very much like my first spiel, and that is that included in your packet is an extension for the DCNR grant, this time associated with the bathroom in Phase One of the community park. That would have been, I'm sorry, that money would have otherwise needed to be, we would have needed to apply for reimbursement at the end of this calendar year. This is an extension for an additional year. So I am respectfully asking the Board to authorize staff to seek an extension on the DCNR grant for the bathroom in Phase One of the community park.
Any questions on that?
I move that we request the one-year extension on the DCNR grant for the comfort stations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, no subdivision and zoning applications. We're going to kick over to ordinances and resolutions for consideration. Tom or Luke?
So, so this next matter is, is something that affects all municipalities in the Commonwealth. Tom, may I defer to you to explain what the state is expecting?
You sure can. Early this year, the General Assembly passed what's known as Act 57, and that requires all municipalities that collect real estate tax to provide a waiver of the late payment penalty in certain circumstances. Act 57 also requires that every municipality that collects real estate tax pass an ordinance or a resolution authorizing that forgiveness and also setting up a process by which someone can claim a waiver of the penalty. And that's what this Resolution 19 of 2022 accomplishes.
Any questions? Yes. Act 57, it doesn't outline what waivers you're to grant, each township makes up its own?
No. There's a, you're required to waive the late penalty on real estate taxes. If the taxpayer claims he never received, he or she, or it never received the bill, you have to file with the tax collector an attestation, or what other people might call an affidavit, which swears that you didn't receive the bill. If you do that, then you're basically entitled to a refund or not being charged the late penalty.
Just the penalty, the interest would still stay?
Well, yeah, it's only the penalty.
That's ridiculous.
Well, I was going to start
I will go on record and say that that's ridiculous.
I was going to start with saying the General Assembly, in its infinite wisdom, passed Act 57. Why this was a priority, I can't say.
So we're to establish a procedure, so we could establish a procedure that would make it almost impossible to get a waiver?
Yeah.
Or, do we just ignore the thing? Do we even have to consider it?
And how many people are going to crawl out of the woodwork and swear?
Everybody's going to say I didn't receive it. Are you kidding?
I don't, yeah.
That actually happened to me, and they looked at me like, so what?
What, whatever.
I can't provide any further explanation. If the person comes in and signs the attestation, then we have to give them the waiver.
Can't we set up procedures?
None of the requirements is that they pay the face value of the tax bill. In other words, they can't get the waiver until they pay the bill. And frankly, this, I think, was meant to address people who move, they're recent buyers, and they, they say they didn't get the tax bill.
All right, Glenn, like you said, they have to pay the bill before they can get the, right, right, the penalty, okay.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution 19 of 2022, establishing a process and procedure by which taxpayers may seek a waiver of late penalty, penalty penalties, late payment penalties.
Do I have a second? There, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 20 of 22, final plan approval for 21 Newman Road. Luke, I'm assuming you want this one?
I can do it.
Yeah, and I actually don't know if there's, if there's an applicant ready or present to speak on that matter either.
It doesn't appear so.
Okay.
But it's a relatively simple matter. The development on Newman Drive is a recent development that was, the approval was obtained by Marsh Creek Homes. When they constructed the house on one of the lots, which was parcel 28.4, the house was, I'm sorry, 28.5, the house was constructed too close to the side property line. They don't really know how that happened. They suspect the stakes were moved, or they fell over and someone put them back in the wrong place, but the house was constructed too close to the property line. So, when they discovered this error, they filed a, what we call a lot-line change plan, which basically swaps property from one lot to the other, a total of 668.89 square feet. So each lot ends up being the same area as it was before the subdivision, but the lot, the side lot line becomes conforming. So that's the background. This resolution has the effect of approving the plan. The applicant has to provide copies of the recorded deeds to the township. Once they swap the parcels, two, prior to recording the plan, the applicant must reimburse the township for all its costs, fees, and expenses. And three, the resolution grants waivers from six sections of the subdivision of land development ordinance that really don't apply to this because no new construction is being proposed.
And you're okay with this, Tom?
Yes.
Any question?
And the Planning Commission, and I forgot to mention that, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended both preliminary and then final approval.
That was my next question to the audience.
Yeah, this plan, this resolution approves it as a preliminary and final plan.
All right, my final question, is the Board okay with it?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be appropriate for a motion, then?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 20 of 2022.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All, aye.
Okay, Resolution 2122. Again, we have participants in the audience for this one. Mr. Nagel, I see, you want to?
And if I just may, very briefly, we prepared a resolution that was previously circulated to the Board. I provided a copy of that resolution to Mr. Nagel. That resulted in some, I think, one major issue and some minor comments. The major issue involved the fee in lieu of recreational lands, and Mr. Brian, Mr. Nagel, being a very careful, good lawyer, went back and looked at the minutes from the preliminary approval, and it turns out the Board waived the fee and accepted the recreational facilities proposed by the applicant on the site as satisfying that provision of the subdivision of land development code. So that issue is resolved.
Well, can I bring up my other issue that was resolved, too?
Sure.
Just so the Board understands. Condition Number 10, completing the highway improvements, was originally drafted to be upon the application for the 50th use-and-occupancy permit, and I'm fundamentally opposed to using use-and-occupancy permits as a trigger for anything because the buyer who had, who's totally innocent is the only one who would be held up. So I asked for it to be changed to building permits issue, and they were gracious enough to accommodate that request. But in the future, I will, I personally don't like the UNO because it only penalizes the poor buyer.
And you agree to everything else, right?
Well, can I bring up my other issue that was resolved too?
Sure.
Just so the board understands. Condition Number 10. Completing the highway improvements was originally drafted to be upon the application for the 50th use and occupancy permit. And I'm fundamentally opposed to using use and occupancy permits as a trigger for anything because the buyers who had, who's totally innocent is the only one who would be held up. So I asked for it to be changed to building permits issue. And they were gracious enough to accommodate that request. But in the future, I will, I personally don't like the UNO because it only penalizes the poor buyer.
And you agree to everything else, right?
Yep.
Yes, now that it was clarified. I was also the one who brought up the open space. But it turns out before I was a supervisor, way before I was a supervisor, in fact, I'm not sure you were counsel, but anyway, it, a previous board has already agreed to waiving the fee in lieu of. So that's that.
Yeah, and Mr. Estey, subject to the mentioned, everything else is acceptable. I'm glad that this.
Well, some of the things do have to be resolved before we sign it.
Yeah, and I'm going to summarize for the minutes what is in the resolution. But other, with the resolution, those two issues that we just discussed, I think you indicated to me, Mr. Nagel, that the applicant is willing to accept these conditions.
Yes, and I'm glad it's ready for final approval. I want to thank everybody for their, all the work they've put into that. And I think that includes almost, almost everybody in this room. So, thank you. And planning commission made a unanimous recommendation of approval. So we're glad to move forward with it.
So Resolution 21 of 2022 has several whereas background clauses. The resolution has the effect of conditionally approving what we now call the Brandywine Walk subdivision and land development, which we know fondly as the Weaver Track. The first condition involves preservation of the Weaver Spring House on the property. And there are several conditions in that condition regarding preservation of the actual spring house and the area around it and the trees on the property. Number two prohibits blocking or interfering with emergency access vehicles during construction. Three indicates that no signage plans are approved. Four is the, an indication that the board acknowledges that the final plan complies with Section 350-50 of the Township Subdivision Ordinance and that no fee in lieu of active recreation of land and facilities is required. Five allows the township to approve the street names after they're selected. Six requires that the municipal authority engineer comment on whether a fence that's in an easement is permissible. Seven requires the elimination of certain types of trees in the riparian corridor. Eight requires, has certain requirements regarding lighting fixtures. Nine requires that the applicant comply with paragraph 21 comments in the Panone Review. Ten is what we talked about a little earlier about certain improvements at the intersection of Horseshoe Pike, Hopewell Road, and Bonsville Road. Pulte Homes of Pennsylvania is required to make those improvements. But this condition says if they're not completed by Pulte by the 50th building permit for this project, then this developer has agreed to make those improvements subject to getting a credit against its Act 209 fee. But the applicant has agreed that the credit would only be applied to the actual construction cost. And the applicant, no matter what happens, would cover the cost of design and permitting from PennDOT. Eleven requires the buffering of properties along Reeseville Road if they're affected by lights, headlights coming out of the property at the Reeseville Road entrance. Twelve requires dedication to the township and PennDOT of right of way along Horseshoe Pike. Thirteen requires site distance measurements to be confirmed at all the intersections. Fourteen requires the light fixture adjacent to Unit 279 to be relocated to better illuminate the pedestrian crossing. Fifteen requires certain revisions to the HOA declaration as required by the engineer and solicitor. Nineteen, sixteen requires compliance with all sanitary sewer review issues that are raised by the sanitary sewer engineer. Seventeen requires compliance with items C through M set forth on pages nine and 10 of the Panone Review Letter. Eighteen must comply with all existing comments and recommendations of the emergency management agencies. And that is any existing comments. It's already been reviewed by those service agencies. And it appears that compliance has already been made. Nineteen, all easements and agreements have to be approved by the township consultants. Mailboxes shall be located in one or more central areas. That's number 20. Twenty-one requires a note in the homeowner's declaration that prohibits applications for variances or other relief to the Township zoning hearing board that would exceed the allotted impervious coverage limitation or permit construction outside the building and deck envelope. Twenty-two requires the plan to show a building and deck envelope for each lot. Twenty-three requires entering into a drainage improvement operations and maintenance agreement if there are any stormwater facilities in the PennDOT right of way. Twenty-four requires the builder and sellers of the residential units to notify buyers of the requirements in the final plan and the HOA declaration. Twenty-five is an acknowledgement by this board that the landscaping plan is approved and the trails are approved. Twenty-six is an acknowledgement by this board that they approved the managed release concept for the stormwater management subject to any modifications required by the NPDES permit. Twenty-seven grants the waivers listed on plan on Sheet 1. Twenty-eight makes the conditions severable, meaning they can be deleted if found to be invalid. Twenty-eight, the conditions have to be complied with to the satisfaction of the board. Thirty, the decision and conditions are binding on the applicant's successors. And thirty-one requires acceptance of the conditions within 15 days.
Mr. Estey, I just have one question on that list, which was number five. And I, I'm not sure if I heard you say the street names are be approved by the board or the?
Township.
By the township?
Street names shall be approved by the township.
Says the board.
Well, I know, but I'm sorry, that's one thing that Mr. Nagel asked be changed and because he didn't want to be delayed by public meetings, so.
Kind of like the sound of Carl Croft.
Yeah, and I don't. The street names are actually approved by?
Yeah, the county.
By 911.
Right.
So we would really have.
But you have to suggest something.
Right. And, you know, Tom's road.
Staff did receive a plan.
Kyle's corner.
So, and I didn't, there were some slight modifications. I mistakenly thought the applicant was the equitable owner, so we changed it to legal owner. That's in one of the whereas paragraphs. What Mr. Nagel just pointed out was changed. And of course, condition four about the fee in lieu of was also changed to be consistent with the prior.
So you just cross out board on number five and put township?
Correct.
Okay. Just before.
Yeah, yeah.
All these conditions, it says here in paragraph, 29, is it, or 30, have to be satisfied before the final subdivision is recorded, correct?
Correct.
So we rely on our solicitor, our engineer, and township management to make sure all these things are done. We don't have to babysit it and track it. We just have to babysit the three and track the three.
You're welcome to participate in that process if you'd like.
No, I'm just.
And Tom, that's all conditions set forth in the resolution, right?
Yes. That was another slight modification. That was, this is the only other one. And being not a trusting soul, Mr. Nagel was concerned that conditions might be conditions that aren't in the resolution. So in number 29, on the second line, I added the words, included in this resolution after the word conditions.
Trust but verify. Correct.
Possible deniability.
May I, we had a brief conversation on five, but I heard two different answers as to how to proceed. Five, I understand, read, at this time, it reads, "Street names shall be approved by the board prior to the recording of the final plan." And the proposed amendment to, as written, is to substitute the word board for township?
Yes, strike, strike board, insert township.
Right.
And just so you know, they've already been approved by the county.
You and the staff can pick names out of a hat.
They've been approved by the county already.
So the approved names should be submitted to the township to make sure there's not something in there that we don't like.
That's fine.
We do have, from the applicant, a map showing the names.
Okay. And they, and as, as Mr. Nagel just said, they've already been approved by the county.
Right. So I don't, I don't want to belabor the, you know, any, any motion to do the resolution as amended. But I, to the extent, to Carl's point about expectations of staff, do you anticipate staff satisfying, that the board is satisfied at a public meeting or just by individual conversations that the manager may have with you?
The latter.
That's what's in my head as well?
The reason they took board out is they don't want any more public meetings.
Well, all the conditions would be satisfied administratively. So to the extent that Luke, or Lisa, or myself, or Nate needs to consult with the supervisors, we will do that.
Right. That's exactly what I, I just want to clarify that, that staff and the consultants will be ensuring that the board agrees with those elements, that it remain as conditions, but not at, with an additional dialogue at a public meeting.
Correct.
Very good.
That's the way I understood it. Correct. All right, any questions from the board?
I move we adopt Resolution Number 21 of 2022.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this concludes the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
Evening, board members. My name is Brian Stefanski. I'm a homeowner and board member over in Hopewell. Excuse me. I'm just stopping by to see if there's been any updates. We have a lot of homeowners upset with the traffic still in our development, especially along Brookhaven through Ferndale Cut and Throw. There have been talks of a, a, a traffic island on North Guthriesville Road as well as a left turn down here at Sunoco. We've reached out to PennDOT, one of the board members did, and they said it's with the township. They're waiting to hear back on the left turn signal. And word's getting around the development. They just want to know what's going on. And Mike Pacelli's our president, we have no answers for them. And we're trying to figure out where we stand on that. And I didn't know if anybody had an update that we could.
We actually just spoke about Hopewell at the last township meeting. So I think the last we had talked, now, you're, you're speaking about in the development proper, not outside of the development?
In the development.
Okay. So Luke?
Right, yeah, so the, the, the deliverable is on my plate, ball's in my court. It was discussed by the board at the prior meeting. Just to rehash work that was done prior to this new course of action that we've agreed to, there was a study done, either early COVID or just before COVID, done by the, by the prior traffic engineer, Andy Heinrich. And the letter that he wrote after performing that, that inspection, that review indicated that neither cut-through traffic nor total traffic volume nor, there's one other criteria, there's cut-through, there's speed, and then there is total volume, that it did not qualify, for his professional opinion, to be retrofit for traffic calming. Now, I know that members of the Hopewell community disagreed with the outcome of that study on the basis of when it was performed. So at, at, the, the last time we had an engineer look at it, the engineer said it did not meet the criteria for traffic calming and that the long-term solution to the neighborhood's problems was the construction of the bypass road associated with the construction of Giant and the improvements to North Guthriesville Road and 322, which would prohibit left turn movements. And if traffic had a safer way to turn left onto 322, fewer cars would cut through the neighborhood. So there was the, there was a long-term proposal there in addition to determining that what he surveyed did not rise to the level of needing traffic calming. But what the, the board has directed staff to do is to come up with a policy by which we can respond to your community or any community with traffic concerns. The key components of those policy would be what constitutes a problem. So in other words, a, you know, when do we do a, a traffic study to determine whether or not the speed is too high, the volume is too high, or it, the, the cut-through traffic is too high to have improvements installed? So step one is diagnosing the problem. But also, and importantly missing, and is a step further than what we've done in the past, is we would need some mechanism to get consensus about an installed solution. So let me, just as a hypothetical, let's say we, we, we got 20 complaints or whatever's necessary to initiate a traffic study. There would be a traffic study, and then the traffic engineer would say, yes, there is a problem. I recommend speed tables, some sort of improvement, speed bumps or speed humps or bump outs to the curb to narrow it. Once we get to that point, we also need another mechanism to ensure that people who are adjacent to those improvements agree to them. Because what we don't want to make, we don't want to get to the point installing speed humps and then having people who are adjacent to the speed humps complaining that the noise of the cars going over those speed humps is something they didn't agree to. So this is about determining in a global sense what constitutes a problem and having a policy to build consensus on what the solution is. And I, I know that our engineer has already done his diligence and sent a model such policy for my consideration. Nate sent one from a community he serves elsewhere that has such a policy. So the, it, I guess, all of that to say, where we are is going to be back at square one, but with a new policy that we're following that describes all the hurdles we need to get through. So everybody knows precisely what must be done.
Got it. Yeah, and I, and I think from a board perspective, our board, we don't think the speed is issue is really the concern here. It's, it's the amount of traffic going through. And especially in the mornings and the evenings. We feel that that study did happen during a pandemic when not a lot of people were going through there. I'm focusing or finding out more about outside the development, the traffic pattern with the light down here at Sunoco. I mean, we have left-hand turns from the used dentist all the way down, except for that light, which, you know, we're trying to answer our homeowners with how, when that's going to be fixed. We just don't have an answer. Is it part of the bypass, is what you're saying? Because we haven't heard anything. Is that all tied together then?
It's the connector road, not the bypass. We should.
Well, yeah, I should, it should be more, yeah. So I'd be more precise in my language. A constituent part of the commercial land development that's associated with Giant is the, is a connector road that connects North Guthriesville to 322. It would have a similar function as cutting through the parking lot at the existing crops would be. If you, if you decided, hey, it's too, your familiarity with the route, you know that it's five o'clock, you have very slim odds of turning left on 322. And you decide, oh, I'm going to cut through the Dunkin' Donuts and go out through the light.
Yep.
This would be a, a road that, that has, that would allow you to have a green turn arrow onto 322. And then if you had proceeded on to, on, south on North Guthriesville until 322, your only choice of maneuver would be right turn. That is a long-term solution that should reduce the cut-through traffic in your community. Also, improvements to, Bonsville and 322 should do the same. The Apple Cross developer, Pulte, is required to make improvements to the intersection at 322. And Bonsville, that will also add turn cycles. So let's, let me describe a maneuver. Another person who might cut through the north half of Hopewell is, is going to the community park and doesn't want to make a left off of, off of 322. And so elects, while proceeding south on North Guthriesville, to cut through Ferndale and then turn onto Hopewell. Another intersection that can contribute to that diversion of cut-through traffic is the lack of improvements at, at the Guthriesville intersection. Right? So the short answer is, it is, yeah, the, the short answer is that, that I need to put a proposal to the board for. put a proposal to the board for a procedure for handling neighborhood requests for traffic calming features.
Okay.
And would you like us to put you on that inclusion?
I was just about to ask that. Or even Mike Bichelli, I know, Luke, you've talked to Mike, if we could be involved, that would be great, so we can keep our people updated. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time.
Quick question, in recent days, the Little Washington Bridge is open? Would that help at all too, cutting, reducing traffic?
Is that the one at the end of?
At the five points? That bridge, that road's reopened now?
Yeah. No, because where they're coming, they're coming from Apple Cross, through Dunkin' Donuts, they're cutting that way. Where they're really worried is if Giant coming, you're having, Moore's Homes are going in behind near Giant, they're going to cut and come right through to get over to, to Hopewell Road because there's no left turn down on 322.
Worked on that.
Yeah, and, and that's where we're hearing the PennDOT saying they can do it, they just need to hear from you. I, I just don't know if it's tied to longer-term stuff, that's a shame.
The connector, the connector road is not a PennDOT project.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's all tied up in court, once the.
Understood. The left-hand turn, though, they're saying they don't have a problem doing it, they just needed to hear from the board, so, or from the township, so our hands are tied. But if we could get that done even sooner, I think that would, that would definitely help. That's something.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
But thank you, appreciate the time.
Anybody else for public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, the notice was today, the, the board did meet in an executive session at the end of the morning session meeting earlier in the month to discuss personnel matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.